Before the call, this Jameson City Council work session to order for Monday, June ninth. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Here.
Brackman.
Here.
Catternidi.
Here.
Reynolds.
Reynolds.
Faulkner.
Here.
Ron Figlio.
Here.
Diversa.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
And President.
Here, thank you. This time, anyone here from the public that would like to speak? We've got five minutes, please leave your name and address.
You folks, small love to Paul Wolf. Mr. Dulce, specifically, you represent the ward that I live in, Ward Two. I've heard you up there complimenting BPU about the maintenance of sidewalks and streets. How much do you walk around Ward Two?
I run the entire ward.
How much do you walk around Ward Two? Not drive, not go down certain streets, how much do you walk?
I run and walk the entire ward.
Your, our ward is terrible, sir. In my resident, in my, in my neighborhood alone, I have sidewalks that are at least thirty degrees tilted. So you can't even walk on, it's safe to walk in the road. I, I have sidewalks.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's unique to just my ward.
I understand that, but this is the ward that I live in, so I have to address you specifically. You, you represent me. We have criminals living next door to us, repeat offenders, they're in paper. We have police contact every single day. Can we please do something to help our police force be more effective? Please. I, this is ridiculous, you've got people wanting to move out of the city because we get no justice, no nothing. I, you guys hear me about this every time I'm here, it's, it's a repeat thing. You represent the citizens of your city. You are supposed to do, at least listen and try to address problems. I, I mean, what was it, we were supposed to have four buildings removed? That the homeless were using to set fires and whatnot in the neighborhood? I think one of them has been removed out of the four. What happened to the other three? We've got sidewalk and street repairs that sit there for months on end. I know we've got a lot of city, but hire more folks if we need work done. There's, there's things out there that need done, that I, that I hear addressed here at these meetings, that I see personally, that don't match. You guys say things go one way, we who walk the streets every day see something totally different. We have no effective policing going on, I mean, when you knock on a door that's open and you just walk away when you're there to serve a warrant? That's not right, that's not proper policing, in my eyes, and I mean, maybe it's because I'm older.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm gonna, I'm gonna interject right now.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because you're ignorant when you make that comment.
I am?
When a police officer walks up to a door and knocks on a door and they have a warrant. Unless it's a search warrant, they don't have the right, the right to walk into your home. There's a thing called the Constitution.
Yes.
Okay? And the police don't have the ability to just walk into someone's home and rifle through it and look for someone.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that they should have that right.
But you just made the assumption, you made the comment, that the police are walking away and they're not doing anything.
What I said was, as I'm sitting on my porch witnessing this, four Jamestown police officers approached two fourteen volt. They said that they had a warrant when they knocked on the door for a certain resident. The door was open, they said they could see people inside.
They still can't go in. They can't go in.
Okay. Then I apologize for being ignorant about that. But what about the repeat offenses? The people who threaten folks with weapons on our streets? Will just continue to do it?
They continue to be arrested.
I understand that.
Okay, so what would you like us more to do?
I mean, I've got folks living next to me who like to threaten people with weapons.
And they continue to be arrested.
And what can we do? Uh, what can, what can we do to make this different, so that they're not a continuous threat to community?
Change the politicians in Albany.
I am with you on that a hundred percent. I, I agree with that a hundred percent. It starts here. Starts right here, you listen to the voices of your citizens and your folks approach it how you need to, while we continue to speak up here. And do what we can. We're coming to you with problems. I know, I say we, but it's me, but there are a lot of them out there that don't want to come here because they see you as ineffective. They see the city council as ineffective, they see our police as ineffective. And I apologize, because you know I'm on the side of the police, I wish you guys could do a better job. I, but, can we do something here, please? We've got criminals roaming our streets, whether they're arrested or not. I was arrested in nineteen ninety-eight for a crime. I went to jail. I sat in jail until I was tried, and that's how it should be. You arrest folks for breaking law, they go to jail, the judicial system sorts it out.
Do you understand that police don't have the ability to remand someone to jail and make sure they stay there, correct? Do you understand that?
No, that's the judicial system.
Correct.
Yes.
But what you're insinuating are that the police are the ones that should be locking them up and maintaining their incarceration, that's not the case.
No, from my personal experience with the police force as a young man. What the police do is they arrest folks who are accused of breaking law, and the judicial system figures out guilt or innocence. Okay? Are you with me on this so far? We don't do that here, and I know that's our government in Albany, but we don't do that here. If I walked up to somebody and threatened them with a weapon at twenty years old, like this person who lives next door to me? At twenty years old, I would have gone to jail. Nowadays, that doesn't happen. How many times do you threaten somebody with a weapon before you go to jail? We need to speak up against what our state is doing.
I would call Governor's office. I would encourage her to repeal.
Our governor actually does not answer civilians.
I would, I would call the nearest state legislators and I would, I would demand that they repeal the years.
Nick Landworthy doesn't even show up to his own town hall meetings.
I would recommend that you.
I'm sorry, what was that?
You have to call Barello's office or Molitor.
Okay.
Those are the two state representatives.
But I, I always assumed that my, mine was to come here.
You know, we're encouraging you to also call. We do, we do communicate, I'm sorry to interject on any of you, but I know the mayor office, mayor's office communicates, I know these council members communicate with the senator and assemblyman, and the governor's office asking them to change. But we're encouraging you to do the same.
Okay. Um, how do we go about that? I mean, I, I live on Fulton Street, I'm just a normal person here in Jamestown. This is, this is my avenue that I'm aware of. I am glad to speak with you after the meeting, so we don't take up so much time here.
You can get, you can get online and you can look up Senator Barello's phone number, you can call this Jamestown office. Talk to, work email, you can send an email.
Okay, and that's, that's Barello? Okay, sorry, I'm horrible with names.
I can do some printout for it for Mr. Barello and Mr. Molitor.
Because you've got folks wanting to leave the city. I know I'm the only one that usually comes here, but I talk to a lot of folks in the neighborhood. They're, they're tired of the conditions in the neighborhoods, they're tired of criminals roaming our streets. Help us out. That's all I ask, help us help you.
Thank you.
Make our city a better place.
I just want to say for the record, that in the years that I've been on council, I've been at every single street in my district.
Okay. Please take a walk down Fulton between A and C.
I've been on Fulton, and I would be glad to come down there. You know, you can get ahold of me either here, or by email, or whatever, or even phone call. I've been on Fulton several times with the Department of Development. I share, we share in your frustrations on the conditions that you mentioned. But there's only so much that we can do, both financially or politically. Our hands are tied, just like yours are. We're out of every single, I can show you lists of places that I've answered, I've go every single place that. Prenardas, Spring Street, Fulton Street, lower parts of different streets, Van Bier and Crosman, Price. I've been through all of them, I've walked them, I've run them, I've visited them, I've been there with police officers, members of the DOD. So I'm there, so I would be more than happy to come and take a look at it, if there's something we can do to patch a sidewalk, we'll look at it. If there's something to do, I was there, we've talked about the demolitions on the street. They're, they're on the, they're on the schedule, but we don't tear houses down. All we can do is put the bids out, when the demolition companies are ready to do it, they do it. Right? Correct?
Okay.
And so, you know, I share in your frustration, because I'd like to see all those houses torn down that are bad.
Then why do we pay people to do a job and they don't do it? I, I'm just asking, I'm not trying to get smart ass.
No, no, we're fine.
There's, there's a, a long process that we have to go through every time we put out a project to bid for a demolition. They all have to have an asbestos survey. That's, that's the first step, so that has to get bid out. Once surveyed, if they come back with asbestos, they then have to be remediated. So that's two different contractors, two different bidding processes. Um, that's probably already a two-month at least process. Once they're remediated, then they have to go back out to bid for demolition, that's another contractor. All of our demolition contractors are also all of our paving companies. So once the weather changes, they go back to paving. We get put to the side, they'll demo them when they can get to them, but if, once it's been awarded, if they're paving, they're paving. Um, there's not anything that we can do about that, that is what their schedule is, that is how they have to run their business. They've got to take advantage of what little nice weather they have to do that paving, and so that's part of the reason that it takes as long as it does.
You don't use local companies, I assume, instead of trying to go to use supper? Because if local companies.
But we do put them out to bid.
If local companies can't do the job, then.
We put them out to bid region-wide, statewide, so there's a, a couple of different, um, websites that, that contractors bid on. And that they, so they get those notifications across the state. But it also doesn't make sense for a company in Buffalo necessarily to bid on a couple of demolitions in Jamestown. So we don't get the responses, you know, from companies that are not from outside the, or that are from outside the area typically. Um, just because the cost to mobilize that heavy equipment is too high, it doesn't make sense for, for companies outside of our area to, to come in and, and do those. So it's very frustrating to us, it is a very long process, but, um, there's really, our hands are tied when it comes to that. There's not much that we can do that we're not already trying to do.
Okay. Thank you for the information.
Chief, can you do me a favor and provide to me, um, arrests that have happened on Mr. Wolf's block? I don't know, pick a time period in the last six months. Can you get those numbers for me and maybe call volume and the amount of arrests that have taken place in that law?
Sure.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, if you did just one specific house, you can see a perfect example.
We'll do the whole block. We'll get all the numbers for you.
And please make sure you put in all the, uh, the responses that don't end in, or, police contact. Because there's a lot of useless, will the useless police contact?
Police don't always make arrests on every single public, that's not, that's not the way it works.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Oh.
Does anyone else have any questions for me? Like I said, I'm just a guy on the streets who hears these things and sees these things, and I'm bringing them to your attention. All right? Thank you, very much.
Is anybody else, and we'll move on to housing.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we didn't have anybody from the public speak. We got right into, uh, some information discussions regarding, um, a lot that the DOD's been doing lately. As you all know, it's the annual action plan timeframe that we're coming up on. And, uh, the numbers are a little bit less than what may have been projected or from last year, but CEBG funds is one point one plus and change billion. Home funds are over three hundred thousand, and there's a summary of the activities that some of that numbers, some of those numbers are going to be spent on. And some of the projects are brought out from the previous, uh, previous year's programs. Uh, Crystal can answer your questions on that. Uh, also, the survey results are in for the five-year consolidated plan and the, and the annual action plan. Um, then there's a handout that's gotten to all of you regarding that. Uh, there's been a, about twenty maybe, surveys that have been returned, and, um, as you can see, the dates are there. There's, got till July first to complete some more surveys. Then there's going to be open discussion on May seventeenth, um, for some more public comment. And then again, public meeting, you have two dates, June fourteenth at Jackson Taylor Park, and June twenty-fourth at Lilian Dixon. And then, uh, the public hearing and hopefully voting on the program, um, on June thirtieth at our, at our meeting. Uh, it's quite a bit of information to digest, um, but we're moving forward on it. The comprehensive plan, uh, host, the folks involved in that, uh, for updating our zoning and our comprehensive plan, held a kayak event down at McCray Point with about twenty participants. And other members of the public attended, and I guess that was a huge success and quite an eye-opener for a lot of the folks that participated in that event. Something new, not new, but finishing, uh, I shouldn't say it that way. Tickets have arrived for our quality of life ticketing process, and we continue to work with the courts. And, um, Crystal has an explanation of the tickets in a handout, so folks will have a clue of what they're being ticketed for, and what areas of, um, areas of concern that these quality of life issues are maintaining. Uh, so there's a handout for y'all to review. They also, um, try to comprehend how much the fees might be for different events. If something's, uh, remediated in a short period of time, or a period of time, uh, the fees could be waived. Uh, the goal of the quality of life issues is we all hope, is to get everybody in compliance with some of these issues that affect not only one neighborhood, but all our neighborhoods and citywide. Also, Crystal passed out chapter two nineteen, which explains in detail the quality of life, uh, section of our city code. Uh, she did touch on nineteen eighty homes and zombie homes, and how the, um, legal process for either of those is still, um, quite lengthy. Uh, in some cases, as much as six months, uh, before some of those properties can be taken over by the city and repurposed. Uh, we also touched briefly on, on the pre-permany process that's been, uh, talked about, and we've had discussion on, and a map included for the zoning, uh, issues, and a map, also a second map for specific infill, uh, infill housing opportunities. Showing, uh, some of the concentrated areas where these infill opportunities can take place. Savannah Avenue, Spring Street, Fulton Street, Bagan Eagle up on the hill, Johnson Street up on the hill, Cross Street, and then maybe some others that might get a look at is Scott Street down off of Windsor, and some Willard Street properties. Very, very informative, and I think the bottom line is for the pre-perming, pre-perming process to get on the books, it's going to take a lot of discussion from not only housing folks, but the entire council and department heads on how we, um, put together and sign off on some of the lengthier considerations for allowing some of the permitting. Uh, hopefully this will come to fruition where contractors, developers, investors, all the folks that took place at Wicked Warren's, uh, event can have a, an opportunity to get involved in helping develop the city, become, uh, more housing-friendly and productive. She's also mentioned that, uh, we have a new code enforcement officer taking over for Larry, who's retiring, and also a principal planners being interviewed, uh, to come online, uh, in the near future. It was a lot for me to write down, also to participate in the discussion, so I may have missed something, or exaggerated something, or understated something. So, uh, Crystal, if you want me to go back and overhash, rehash anything, let me know.
You did pretty good there, Bill. Um, only one, a clarification, uh, the annual action plan, the resolution that you have before you, there's nothing referencing any prior years. All, all the information is for this upcoming annual action plan.
Okay.
So the proposed programs are programs that we have developed and established, um, because we are still operating within our prior consolidated action plan period. So we still have to stick to that. Um, so as you can see, the dollar amounts, um, the recommended dollar amounts are there for you. If you have questions or, um, you know, input that you want to provide, please reach out, let us know. Um, you can call me, Casey. Wel- welcome to come in and sit down and chat with us. Um, but we do hope to have this, um, voted on, uh, and approved by all of you, so we can submit, uh, at the end of, uh, this month. We have our public hearing, June thirtieth. Um, it is due to HUD a little bit later this year, um, just because of some of the stuff that was happening at the federal level. Um, so they did delay our due date, but we are still planning to submit it at our normal time, because we, sooner we get it in, the sooner it gets approved, the sooner we can get the funding and get it out into the community. So, um, I think there was one more. Maybe that was it. Oh, um, the zoning, uh, so yes, we will be proposing, there's not a resolution before you yet, um, we're not there. We just want to start having the conversations about what the pre-approved zoning variances, um, will look like. It will require Planning Commission approval, it will require zoning board approval. Um, we will have something prepared for you. I'm hopeful for the next work session. Uh, we don't anticipate it being ready for a vote in June, but we do hope to be ready for a vote in July, so. And I think that's, that's it. Everyone take your survey. Do our quote on the front. And please pass it along, it's available on the website and there, our, uh, social media. Casey, I think Casey emailed it to you as well. Um, she's got thirteen surveys, um, collected so far.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. You want to add plans, Brian?
Thank you, Mr. President, we have a resolution.
The first is, resolved the mayor, her authorized representative, is authorized to enter for lease agreement for space at McCray Point Park, for the purpose of kayak rental, term December thirty-third, twenty twenty-six, and approval of the City Park Department on location, and asked before by the corporation council. If there's some new information come up, I'd like to just turn it over to, uh, the corporation council.
Yes, we have had just a concern about wasting property on city land, we may need to add consideration for that, our nominal rent amount. Right now, I will state that for Shatticoine paddle boat, they have provided the city extensive insurance for liability, uh, you know, extensive insurance. I will say this is not unique to Jamestown, I mentioned rent kayaks in Buffalo and, uh, the Marine Park there, as well as Delaware Park. So I think we will do a little bit of a revision to the MOU to reflect some consideration, uh, for, for the, the enterprise, but it will continue. You may have already seen the, the boat area there at Shatticoine Park, so I encourage all of you to go use it, if you don't have your own kayak, and then also remind you that there's still public kayak launches at McCray Point, as well as on Clifton Avenue in Jamestown.
Their resolution was approved. The next is the CEBG and home program. Twenty twenty-five action plan. Still just talked about. Note, the two resolved on the, uh, resolution, they all say the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Shouldn't it be twenty twenty-five?
It should.
There were two clauses at the bottom.
Yeah, my values.
Yeah, so twenty twenty-five also.
That was probably a copy case.
It's a resolution error. Right. That's what Anderson. That was approved. And there's the hearing, uh, three weeks from tonight. Next is extending the hiring freeze and hiring for Fulton firefighters to fill current vacancies for the determents within the Jamestown Fire Department. Need the funding is included in the twenty twenty-five general fund budget. That was approved. Next is for recruit firefighters are authorized to attend the New York State Office of Fire Prevention and Control recruit firefighter training program. Uh, in Montreux Falls, beginning July twenty-first, including October thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, with the expensive pay, section seventy-seven, section seventy-seven B of General News Laws of the State of New York. That was approved. Uh, next was the, kind of Chautauqua applied for state funding and New York State Department of Justice Services Stride Grant Program. This county's application is approved, the fortune grant fund must be shared with the City of Jamestown Police Department. Excuse me. And the mayor and police chief are authorized and elected to participate in the Stride, from the period of March twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, with a funding amount of three hundred nine thousand eight hundred dollars and fifteen dollars, no sense. Righted by the State of New York. That's approved. The next is a resolution, another mistake here, um, executing agreement with, this should be our padded concrete excavating of Jamestown, New York. Restrict reconstruction twenty twenty-five, look at the units and the test phone didn't even, uh, corrected, and then also the amount needs to be corrected. It should be one hundred ninety-five thousand eight hundred dollars and no sense. Um, subject to the appropriation, approval of the corporation council at the form. This project will be funded through CHIPS funds. One ninety-five. For various flatwork, urban gutter, uh, cook replacement, and landscape restoration. Again, that's on Barrow Street. That was approved. And the next is to execute an agreement with our padded concrete excavating of Jamestown, New York for Strong Street total reconstruction from under guest avenues of Lakeview. Subject to flatwork, plastic curb and gutter. Create a binder course down and four NBA cast iron detectable warning plates. Just with stone and landscaping. This is an amount of forty thousand five hundred eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Also, will be funded through CHIPS funding. That was approved. Last resolution was a donation from a. Last resolution was a donation from the Ralph C. Junior Legacy Fund for Design and Access administered by the Community Foundation for Greater Buffalo for twenty thousand dollars in no sense to be designated as part of Bergman Park Disc Golf. And say counsel hereby extend its appreciation and gratitude on behalf of the citizens of Jamestown to the Community Foundation for Greater Buffalo for the generous donations. Especially counsel Faulkner, who is the director of sports discipline there.
He gave out statistics.
Would you guys like to hear the statistics?
Yeah, those are good. You gotta give the statistics.
So New York State has two hundred forty-seven disc golf courses. Bergman Park was the sixty-fourth most played last year. In the entire country, there's ten thousand eight hundred thirty-six. Bergman Park was two thousand six hundred and seventy-second. So we're up there in those. There's an app that you can keep score on that pretty much everybody that plays uses. So it also tracks like how many steps you took while you played and how long it took. One of the crazy facts, last year, just the people using the app, which is most people, four million four hundred eighty-five thousand one hundred and sixty-six steps were taken around Bergman Park, which equates to over twenty-one hundred miles. So it's a whole lot of good people in the park.
That's awesome.
And that resolution was approved as well. We got an update from the comptroller that spring book is pretty well fully implemented and trading will ensue very shortly for our employees. And also the twenty twenty-four books are almost done on her end. They're head off to the auditors, so that's good news as well. And that's all we have from finance.
And on to public safety, Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had three resolutions and they were all on finance as well. The first one was for the hiring of the four full-time firefighters as a result of some vacancies. And that funding is included in the twenty twenty-five budget. That resolution passed. Picking back off that was the second resolution allowing the four recruit firefighters to attend the New York State Office of Fire Prevention and Control on July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, October thirtieth, twenty twenty-five in Montour Falls, New York with fees and expenses paid to seventy-seven B of General Innocable Law of the State of New York. That resolution passed. They have not been hired yet. They're in the process of doing that, so. And the third resolution was what Mr. Shaolin talked about was the Stride Grant. I don't know if the chief wants to discuss this at all, but this grant is the first time grant for the police department. It's a rather large amount, larger I think than, than we've ever received for domestic violence, which is, which is awesome. Obviously a problem. And I'll read a little bit from the resolution. The New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services has announced the Stride statewide targeted reductions in intimate partner violence. Grant awards for the period of March first, twenty twenty-five through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-sixth. Chautauqua County Stride Partnership received a total of eight hundred forty-seven thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars. The Jamestown Police Department was awarded three hundred nine thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars from these funds. Funding shall be used for the prevention of and intervention in incidents of intimate partner violence through evidence-based survivor-centered trauma-informed and culturally responsive strategies. The Jamestown Police Department has been provided funding for overtime, domestic violence details, a crime analyst position, outreach materials, canine supplies, a domestic violence case management system, as well as travel and training. The City of Jamestown will not have to contribute any funds in order to participate in the Stride Grant. So this, this grant, my personal opinion is, is huge for that division of the police department. Is there anything else you'd like to add, chief?
I'd just like to add that Paula, our grant writer, did an outstanding job writing this for us.
So that resolution passed. And then we had a number of informational reports, block party and special events. Block party hosted by Mary Maxwell on August second, twenty twenty-five, Saturday, rain date of August ninth, twenty twenty-five. Fullerton Avenue from Royal to Woodworth, nine to five PM and that passed. Second special event was the Labyrinth Summer Music Series to be held on various dates in May through September from what, five PM until eight forty-five PM, including setup and teardown. This event was approved electronically by the Public Safety Committee. And on that topic, we did have Mr. Gary Templeton, who lives near Labyrinth on Fourth Street, speak about the summer music series. Mr. Templeton was very cordial. He's not against the events going on at Labyrinth. So he's supportive of that. He is just asking that the owners of Labyrinth be good neighbors and maybe try to direct the music of the speakers in a different direction from his and his wife's home. Or maybe try to dial back the sound a little bit. He even did some research and found some sound barriers on Amazon that cost a couple hundred dollars that he even was willing to purchase them and they could set them where the stairs or where the musicians are playing outside. They're kind of tamp the music down. So I did tell him that I would speak to the owner of Labyrinth about his concerns and that maybe we could try to come up with something to make everyone happy. I know this has been an ongoing issue each summer, but like I said, he was very cordial and just wants to be neighborable. So the music series did pass electronically. The next special event was Jamestown Juneteenth Festival. Winter Garden Plaza to be held on Friday, June twentieth, twenty twenty-five at the Winter Garden Plaza from five PM to ten PM, including setup and teardown. That passed. And the second, or the next special event was Jamestown Juneteenth Festival at Jackson Taylor Park. Be held on Saturday, June twenty-first and Sunday, June twenty-second, twenty twenty-five at Jackson Taylor Park from seven AM until nine thirty PM, including setup and teardown. Regina, did you want to speak on these events?
Um, sure, I can. We've, this will be like the third year that we've done an event in the Winter Garden Plaza. So we're looking forward to that again. We have a band coming in from Erie. They're well received over the last past three years, so we'll bring them back again. So come out, get your boogie on and have a hot dog and enjoy the evening. And then on Saturday and Sunday, we'll be doing the Juneteenth Festival at the Jackson Taylor Park where gonna have some good food down there, some good activities down there. One thing on that Sunday, we will be doing our scholarship presentation, which is really what is our main focus, is to award these scholarships. So that will occur at two PM on Sunday. So just come out and support and enjoy, engage, have a good time.
Thank you.
I do have a schedule of events here, if anybody's interested. Thank you, Joe, for printing me some, because I forgot mine at home. But come on out, good time. One more thing I will add, that's not, didn't require a special event is that on Thursday, because that is Thursday, June nineteenth, that's the actual Juneteenth holiday. We will be doing a flag raising ceremony up at the Robert Jackson Center at five PM. So it'll be a brief ceremony of flying the Juneteenth flag. And then following that, we will have a viewing of a documentary called Faith and Freedom, which speaks a little bit about Juneteenth and how faith was a big factor for the enslaved people as they were learning of their freedom. So got a lot of things. They're actually doing a junior, junior pointed out to me. It's four days this year. It's a lot of work, a lot of time. So come on out and support us. Thank you.
The next special event is fireworks display at Tarp Scump Games to be held on July third and July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five at dusk following baseball, which is annual.
One point on there, just to, I think they're using the same company that is used in the past. We could have the requirement for the lower noise fireworks. In the past, it's been much, a little less volume. And they don't use those, what they call the reports.
Right.
They just go bang, bang, bang. Appreciate that, my brother.
Next, so that passed. The next special event was Jamestown Farmers Market. Five K to be held on Saturday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-five from seven thirty AM until eleven thirty AM, including setup and teardown. And that passed. The final event was, special event was Whirlie Bird Music and Arts Festival to be held on Friday, August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five at the Winter Garden Plaza from twelve PM until eleven PM, including setup and teardown. And that passed as well. That's all we have.
And I have to say one more thing too. That gentleman that called me about the, the music. So I'm glad that you called to him, because I tried to reach out to him twice and no response.
Sure. And, and I'll, I'll stop down and talk to Jeff.
I even tried to call him again today and no response.
I'll stop down and talk to Jeff at Labyrinth and I'll report back to everyone here and I'll reach out to Mr. Templeton as well. Maybe we can make something happen.
Okay, thank you. Move on to fellow workers, Randy?
Thank you, Mr. President. We, we only had three resolutions that were all covered in, in finance. Brent explained them in more detail, but it's the flat work on Barrow Street and Strong Street, curb and gutter. Almost the whole length is gonna, it's been badly broken up down there because, because of the parking and some of the heavy trucks go around and on the gutters and they're breaking them up pretty bad. So talked about that. And then the, the donation from the Ralph Wilson. The twenty thousand they're going to give for the disc golf up at Bergman Park. But other than that, that's the three resolutions we had.
Matt?
Sure, just a couple of updates of things that have been going on. Street reconstruction for the summer was finalized and if anybody asks, it is on the website. So if anybody has any questions, it's up there. Joe and Mark and the team have a where are we working today on there? So if anybody has any questions, anything that's closed for the day and whatnot, that should be on there as well. At the request of Dan Stone and some other things, we sent out a press release about vandalism in the parks and the ongoing increase that has been happening. We are looking at some obviously cameras and some other things throughout that. We don't have that yet. But just want to remind the public that please, if you see something, please report it. There's been a lot of unnecessary damage to our parks and no park has been unique so far. Some have had worse than others, but definitely some of them have seen worse, for sure. And I, again, I know we've had it in the media about JRC and what's going on there. Their last day was Friday. Things, JRC is not ending. It is really pulling back and sunsetting. Funding has been dwindling and reevaluating what the future course will be for neighborhoods and urban core. In the interim, and it's very brief, the programs, anybody who was given money, again, this was all sent out in a press release multiple times. Anybody who was promised money through JRC, through neighborhood funding is still going to get that. The only difference is, is their point of contact. It's still paid by the same person. The board is still managing that. The board is still meeting, in fact, meeting more minimally weekly, bi-weekly, the JRC to try to figure out how the next plan is. There are consultants doing work. We don't have all the answers. So if anything that you guys cannot answer, please send them to my office in partnership with Crystal. And Heather in her department, Joe and Ashlyn are playing interface for the intermediate period of where the bills and stuff to get turned into John to get paid. So nothing has changed. They were given awards. The awards are still coming. If anyone asks you, they're still eligible for that in those neighborhood clusters. It's a work in progress. That's all I can tell you. If there's any questions, please reach out. And then I have two items for executive session. No action to be taken, one on personnel and one on contractual. Tim, I think you're the only lucky one to stay. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, Tim. Two separate items.
So you have one?
The one I, yes.
Right, so it'll be a three.
Yes. Possible litigation.
Before we go into executive session two, I just want to say, year two twelve, correct? I'll stop by and they'll set up an appointment. We'll probably throw off and, and I guess I had, I was up there about a year or so ago with the DOD when it was an issue processed with the whole mall there. And so I'll come back and we'll.
Was that the one that was on fire filled with dog feces?
Yeah.
I'll come back. I'll stop by, okay?
Appreciate that, thank you.
So I have a motion to go into executive session. Just one more second. All in favor?